We're here today for my eighth annual senior walk along the Belt Line. And this time, we did it in rare form, large and in charge. We're at West Side Park. We're basically taking these seniors on a walk of a brand-new park that's along the Belt Line, consistent with my theme that seniors that's been here for years in the city of Atlanta should be able to enjoy these beautiful things that the Belt Line has brought like this West Side Park. They and I just went out and were walking all over, enjoying nature, and it's a great time with these seniors. Today, I had to do all kinds of TV interviews. I had to do meetings, and so I had to wear a suit. But I would not miss my annual senior walk even if I have to be out here walking in my suit. This is too important. Get out here and walk with my friends, my loved ones. When we got started today, they didn't know where they were going. I asked them, "Had any of them been here before?", and only one had. So this is a great way for them to see the city, and this is the first time. So they didn't know how long the walk was, what we were gonna see along the walk. So I was happy to hear them go, "Ooh!", and "Ah!", and "This is so nice", and they started taking out their own phones and taking pictures. We went up a hill, and we made it up that hill and on up some steps, and then they got to see the overlook. And that was the delight. The pride and joy of this thing is to be able to overlook the water, overlook the city, and they enjoyed that quite a bit. This is an exciting time on my eighth annual senior walk, and these guys are having fun.
Today is a great day in southwest Atlanta. This is the 16th Annual Harris Community Works Morgan Family with Councilmember Andrea Boone and the City of Atlanta Thanksgiving Holiday Celebration Give Back.
We've been blessed and fortunate enough, man, to have partnerships with the City of Atlanta for, I believe, three mayors now. And Councilman Boone, Councilman C.T. Martin have all kind of wrapped their arms around us in unity, and they've allowed us to expand our vision of giving.
We had greens, we had turkeys, we had hams, curly tea, and to top it off, sweet potato pie with fresh collard greens. We want to thank Reverend Gregory Sutton and Gail Sutton because Jackson Memorial always opens their door to this community.
I literally grew up on the back street right over there, you know what I mean? Twenty-three years of my life. I'm from Attleville, I'm from the west side, so the give back right here in the neighborhood is a beautiful thing.
If everyone does a little, nobody has to do a lot. Atlanta's our home. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
The Cascade Road Complete Street Project represents years of commitment and a passionate collective push from many who saw a vision for its future, one that would benefit all.
Today, we're here in beautiful southwest Atlanta celebrating $20.9 million worth of improvements right here on Cascade Road. We'll have new streetscapes, benches, we'll have resurfacing. And southwest Atlanta is the home to many, many of Atlantans. Home of Henry Aaron and Billy Aaron, Judge Clarence Cooper, the home of Evelyn Lowry, Joseph Lowry, Andrew Young, and so many more notable Atlantans. So we are so very happy to be right here to celebrate this groundbreaking.
This ceremony is especially meaningful to me because this is home for me. Cascade is where I get my groceries. So the first phase of this project, the first $20 million is gonna take us from Cascade right here at 285 to Avon, and then the next phase is gonna take us to the next Kroger. So we're gonna go Kroger to Kroger when this is all done. We can do some price checking in our own neighborhood. We'll be able to do that whether we walk, whether we jog, whether Rebecca Serna of the Atlanta Bicycle Coalition, whether we're on a bicycle, whether we're on MARTA, or whether we're riding around in a car. We're gonna be able to get up and down Cascade without issue, without bumps, and also without being injured in the process. Safety is the most important part about this, to make sure people can cross from District 10 on the left to District 11 on the right. We want everybody to be able to make it home safely. Cascade Road just deserves it, y'all, and we're gonna get it right here in our community.
This is a wonderful event. After many, many years of delay, the Cascade Complete Street Project is finally beginning Phase 1, which will be from 285 to Avon. I'm very excited to be a part of this, own property off Cascade. So this is a street that everyone uses, and it's so critical to our city to make sure that everyone knows that we care about making safe streets everywhere.
So we're out here today on Cascade Road, and this is a very exciting project because it's actually gonna be, all total, about a $35 million refurbishing streetscape project that the community has been waiting for for the last four years. You know, the neighbors are so excited about this project. You know, as you go down Cascade, once you get closer in, as you're going into the west end area, it's bumpy and lumpy, okay? And the residents have been complaining about that for the last three or four years. So this is the beginning of a new day in southwest Atlanta with this wonderful... This is the first phase of the $20 million streetscape project. It's gonna start right after the groundbreaking, so it's gonna be starting before the end of 2021. And it's gonna be a three-to-four-year project. So it's really gonna look nice, and the people in southwest Atlanta deserve it. In fact, it's been too long, okay? But now, it's here.
Well, I'm here today at Victory Outreach Church. Great church in my community. I'm in partnership with Victory New Calvary Baptist Church and Tyler Perry Studios for a Thanksgiving giveaway for my District 12 in my community. We're out here giving away food, all kinds of vegetables, turkeys, right before Thanksgiving to give thanks for the folks in my district. I want to give a special thanks to Tyler Perry. Actually, he donated most of this food today, and we've been having a ray of volunteers. This church that's in my community is also beautiful in terms of their volunteerism and what they do for our community. So I'm happy to be out here today, just celebrating and giving thanks on Thanksgiving.
I'm about to go inside and have me a ball at the Sneaker Ball.
All right, tell me about the sneakers that you have on this evening.
So what I got on is my clean Stan Smith Adidas. You know, taking it back to the old-school classic, to go with a classic look, you know? I just like how we do things in Atlanta, man. We do it for the culture, we do it for the people, do it for the fashion and the art, so I'm enjoying it.
As always, man, you've been a huge supporter of us, so it's good to always, you know, see you when you come out, man. And this time of the party, man, it's always about, you know, making sure we're giving back to the community, make sure the kids build from this. So welcome to Sneaker Ball 11.
Sneaker Ball is like, it's all about art, it's all about communities. We try to tie it from the artists that you love to see here all the way back down to the kids. So basically, the art and the effort that we put forward tonight, we put that money right back into the school system for the kids. So we're supporting art through all the way around.
That's what's up.
I just want to show you some of the things that we have. Because not only is it art, we have technology incorporated in it.
That's what I want to see, how the technology works.
So basically, you download our app?
Yes, sir. Andre's eyes moving, Big Boy looking, his eyes moving. That's animation right there. That's creative right there, that's using art and technology together. That's right. That's cool, that's what's up. Hey, man, you can't do Atlanta without talking about our town. So you hand-paint these right now, on the spot?
On the spot. These are all shoes that I've customized, these are all hand-painted.
All right, man, appreciate it. Thank you, man. Good work, so loving the creativity.
Yes, sir.
It's a ball tonight, y'all, and I'm enjoying it. These guys do a great thing. Thank you for your contribution to the community.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Johnson. This is Vice Chair Marcy Collier-Oberstree. Trying to see if Chair Dickens or Mayor Lett Dickens is here on today?
No, we did not, Madam Chair.
Okay. Do we have a call? Can we call the roll?
Yeah, we can call the roll, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'll call the meeting to order.
Oh, just a second, we'll start with that. So, good morning, everyone. Welcome to our December 1st meeting for the Transportation Committee of the Atlanta City Council. This is the final transportation meeting for 2021. My name is Marcy Collier-Oberstree, and I'm your Vice Chair of this committee. I will now call this meeting to order. Mr. Johnson, could you please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Madam Chair. Mayor Lett Andre Dickens. Councilmember Matt Westmoreland.
Here.
Councilmember Amir R. Faroki.
Here.
Councilmember Antonio Brown. Councilmember Jennifer N. Aye.
Here.
Councilmember J.P. Mastakite. Councilmember Marcy Collier-Oberstree.
Present. Okay, so... Thank you. Could you please read the remote meeting statement?
Yes, Madam Chair. This Transportation Committee is being conducted remotely as advertised as in accordance with the Georgia Code Section 50-14-1. The meeting will be conducted in conformance with Robert's Most Order and the rules of council as authorized by the City Code. The public may access the meeting by dialing 404-902-5066, conference ID 151945, which was noted on the November 23rd, 2021. Council's homepage at citycouncil atlantaga.gov, the council's YouTube channel, or the council's Facebook and Twitter pages via @ATLCouncil. Our presentations are available on the Atlanta City Council Transportation Committee presentation page. The agenda was published and made available on November 23rd, 2021 via atlantacityga.iqm2.com. In addition, the public was able to submit comments via voicemail at 404-330-6059 between the hours of 4:00 and 7:00 p.m. the day before this meeting. All persons present on the remote council meeting conference bridge are requested to reach your phones and speakers. Additionally, speakers must be acknowledged by the presiding officer prior to speaking. Each council member is requested to open your Outlook email and minimize the screen. Amendment, substitutes, and informational documents have been distributed to committee members beforehand. Thank you all on the vast real cooperation. Madam Chair, that concludes our remote meeting statement. We are down to the adoption of the agenda.
Absolutely. So now let's move on to the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda?
Motion, what's more?
Okay, a second, a second. Thank you, Chair, I mean, Councilmember Aye. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, foyer, zero nays. Agenda has been adopted.
Okay. So let's move on to the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Westmoreland.
So, second eye? Approved by Westmoreland, second by Aye. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, foyer, zero nays. The minutes have been approved.
Okay. And now we'll hear our public comment.
One moment.
Hi, this is John Monahan of the Atlanta Downtown Neighborhood Association. I ask you to please review and support... We have a open letter that has been adopted by the Neighborhood Association regarding the Safe MARTA BRT line that is coming through the downtown neighborhood, and it's routing and ensuring that we get transit proper dedicated right away. Each of you should have received an email with the letter and supporting documents. I ask you to please reach out if you have any questions, or please work to network with MARTA and other appropriate parties. Anything else we can do, you can find more information on the Atlanta Downtown Neighborhood Association at atlantadna.org. Thank you, bye.
Hi, my name is Susan Doyle, D-O-Y-L-E. My phone number, 404-374-3388. I live at 413 Ridgecrest Road in Atlanta, 30307. I'm concerned about the intersection at the dead end of McLendon into Ridgecrest Road, and I would like to pursue a three-way stop there. The traffic on Ridgecrest has gotten to be out of control. DeKalb County did do a traffic study which showed an amazing amount of traffic on our little residential street. Ridgecrest Road is impossible to cross when there's so much traffic, and it's a dangerous situation. And also, traffic on McLendon cannot turn right or left onto Ridgecrest during high-traffic times. I'm happy to share the DeKalb County results of the traffic study with you all, but I would like to pursue a three-way stop there. I think it would slow down traffic and also make it safer for pedestrians to cross Ridgecrest onto McLendon and for drivers to turn from McLendon onto Ridgecrest. Once again, my name is Susan Doyle, D-O-Y-L-E, 404-374-3388, and I'm concerned about the intersection of Ridgecrest and McLendon in the city of Atlanta. Thank you very much.
My name is Jennifer Brooks. Thank you all for your service. Ordinance 21-0-0775 has been amended and held in committee. I would still like to ask the 2022 Transportation Committee to pay special attention to the impact of closing Peachtree Street from 17th Street to Mitchell Street every Sunday. Let's find a way to make streets alive part of the fabric of our city by sharing the love and moving it around to various neighborhoods and across all demographics. I offer you my service to help make this the sensible. Thank you.
Briefings, committee members and staff. A special briefing to you citizens of Atlanta monitoring our government in action. Ben Howard, senior advocate and public policy analyst. The Atlanta Planning Advisory Board, ASAP, has a transportation committee hired as it is kept. Under the late Melissa Firestone, the ASAP Transportation Committee was lively, informative, and productive. ASAP members and the public were kept abreast of happening at the city, state, and regional level. Action items were discussed and strategies formulated. Those were the good old days. But 2022 is just around the corner. Some are seeking a citizen participation revival next year. To get involved in the new ASAP, call 404-827-8011. And ask to be notified about ASAP meetings. If you experience any problems, please contact the Department of Planning at 404-330-6145. Let's make it a good day in this new year.
Hi, Transportation Committee. My name is Carden Wyckoff of District 2, and I urge you to block projects based on equity and safe access to transit, starting with high-injury network communities, and to consistently and transparently report on their progress. And I would like to see Atlanta to renew the T-SLOSS 2.0 money by prioritizing sidewalks and street safety improvements. It's really important to me as a military user and disability advocate in the community that we prioritize sidewalks as these are a matter of accessibility and getting around the city. Thank you very much. Bye.
Hello, my name is Thad Oviet. And, oh, again, Thad Oviet. And can we put some of that T-SLOSS 2.0 money towards electric bicycle charging stations? We have a great startup here in Atlanta called Parket Cycles that is the world leader in a universal secure electric bicycle charging station that can securely park and charge any bicycle, and electric bicycle, and variation thereof on the market today. If we just put a tiny bit of money towards that, it'll make Georgia the front-runner leader on the electric bicycle market, which is the fastest-growing section of the electric vehicle industry currently, well above electric cars. And it would also produce a ton of jobs in manufacturing, and assembly, and deployment, and workforce because the electric bicycle charging stations from Parket Cycles are made here in Georgia. They're manufactured in Swanee, and they are assembled in Woodstock. And the owners are native Georgian, and they are two Georgia Tech alumni. So can we put a tiny bit of that money from the T-SLOSS 2.0 towards electric bicycle charging stations from a group called Parket Cycles, which is a local startup making headway on being able to power up safely in public?
Hello, Atlanta City Council Transportation Committee. My name is Carl Holt, and I am speaking about the T-SLOSS 2.0. Just had a few concerns about it. What safeguards are there this round to ensure that we don't have a repeat of the North Side Tri Pedestrian Bridge, which did cost $23 million? That came out of T-SLOSS that could have went to sidewalk repairs and repaves. As well as what fixes are gonna be made to the procurement process? You know, back in August, Midtown Alliance wrote a letter highlighting the procurement issue that had held up many of their transportation projects, and actually threatened to lose federal funding. So that's one thing, if we're going to get $300 million, we need to look at how to streamline the procurement process. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Josh Propp, and I live in the Fifth Council District. And I'm calling to urge you to select projects that are based on equity and safe access to transit, and to start by prioritizing high-injury network communities, and to consistently and transparently report on the progress against those goals. I want the city of Atlanta to renew the T-SLOSS and bond by prioritizing sidewalks and street safety improvements. I am an Atlantian that drives, cycles, runs, and walks in our community, and I believe it is extremely unsafe currently to get around the city by any mode other than by private vehicle. So I want the projects that are funded to absolutely prioritize making it easier for Atlantans who don't have access to a private automobile to use transit, to walk, and to cycle. And I want to see those improvements implemented as quickly, as efficiently, as cost-efficiently as possible. Again, my name is Josh Propp, and I live in the Fifth City Council District. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair, that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. I'd also like to add right here that this is where we would normally have a presentation from MARTA today, and we are not going to do that today, but we are posting the presentation on Public View on our website. So that's where that MARTA's presentation will be for everyone to view. So now we're gonna move on to our regular agenda and ordinance, of course, for a second read.
Item number 1, 210-0888. An ordinance by Transportation Committee to extend the temporary waiver provisions of Part 2 Code Ordnances, Chapter 22 Aviation Article 3, Harville-Jackson Atlanta International Airport, Division 7 Ground Transportation Services, Subdivision 3, Taxi Cab General League, Section 22-236, Condition for Use at the Airport, Subsection 8.
This is requesting authorization to extend the seven years vehicle age limitation to ten years, affecting approximately one hundred and fifty-two vehicles of the three hundred seventy-two vehicles that we have issued decals to this calendar year. And the reason for that is because of this drop in transaction, significant drop in taxi transaction for this calendar year, of course, an inventory shortage and the industry itself for new vehicles. And one other thing we are going to ensure is conducting frequent inspection to ensure the safety of these older vehicles and the cleanliness of these vehicles. So, I do recommend approval of this ordinance.
Okay, that sounds absolutely necessary. I move approval. Is there a second?
Second, aye.
Okay, motion by myself, second by aye. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Westmoreland in favor. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable.
Okay, we're going to move to the next item.
Madam Vice Chair, item number two. Has a substitute. We get a motion to bring forth a substitute.
I move to bring forth the substitute. Is there a second? Second, aye. Motion by myself, second by aye. Please bring forth the substitute. Prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Westmoreland in favor. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays, this substitute is for you. Item number twenty-one, item number two, twenty-one oh zero eight eight nine, a substitute ordinance by Transportation Committee. A substitute order admitting the Atlanta City Code of Ordinances, Section Twenty-two, One ninety-one, issuance of notices of violation for unsafe or improper operation of motor vehicles to include fines for violations of airport rules and regulations at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport and for other purposes.
Okay, so would GM Bedore like to speak on this one as well?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair. This is just to strengthen our safety protocol on the airside portion of the airport and also to reduce our risk and liability exposure. So, this is adding an administrative notice of violation to our existing airport safety standards manual.
That sounds good. I move approval. Is there a second or anyone have a question? Second, aye. Okay, motion by myself, second by aye. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Westmoreland in favor. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable, substitute.
Thank you. Let's move to the next item.
Item number three, twenty-one oh zero eight nine zero. An ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his knee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to retroactively ratify a renewal of the memorandum of understanding with the USO Council of Georgia, Inc., for the operation and management of USO Lounge facility in the central passenger terminal complex, domestic terminal at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport, effective October first, twenty twenty-one, in accordance with Section two eleven sixty-three, subsection C, Article ten of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances and for other purposes.
GM Bedore, would you like to speak about this one?
The USO provides volunteer service to our transitioning men and women of the armed services. This is free service to our nation's warfighters. The FAA just conducted an audit on the space that we allocate to the USO and found that we're in full compliance with all FAA regulatory requirements. So, recommend approval to continue allocate the space to the USO to continue the service to our men and women in uniform.
Nice. So, I move approval. Is there a second? Second, aye. Motion by Overstreet, second by aye. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. Westmoreland in favor. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable.
Okay, moving to the next item.
Item number four, twenty-one oh zero eight nine one. An ordinance by Transportation Committee to amend Chapter one thirty-eight, Article eight of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to reauthorize your issuance of permits available to eating and drinking establishments that wish to operate outdoor areas on the street in the public right of way and for other purposes.
Is Mr. Joshua Humphrey to speak to this?
Yes, good morning, everyone. This is Josh Humphries with the Department of City Planning. This ordinance, so right after COVID started during the lockdowns, we created this all-street dining program in partnership with the Department of Transportation to allow for businesses to do little parklet areas, to take an all-street parking spot and do some outdoor dining in it. That program was initially set to sunset at the end of twenty twenty-one, and so this would extend it for one year under the same setup through the end of twenty twenty-two. And so, this is just to make sure that the existing ones, we have about twenty or so in the city right now, we continue to operate after December thirty-first of this year and exceed that period.
Okay, is, does anyone else have anything they'd like to speak to this particular ordinance about, or would you like to, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. This is I, I'll make a motion. We've had one of these in my district, and it's a, it's a good pilot project to be trying out in the city.
Yes, I actually like one in, at Bud's. So, I'll second that.
Madam Vice Chair, we're having technical difficulties on E-borrow room. Can we take a voice vote on this item?
Yeah, so, motion by aye, second by Overstreet, and...
Councilmember Westmoreland?
In favor.
Councilmember Amir R. Farroki?
Yes, you don't have to say R., you can just say Amir Farroki.
The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable. Takes us to item number five.
Thank you.
Twenty-one oh zero nine two nine. An ordinance by Councilmember Andre Dickens amending the FY twenty twenty-two Airport Renewal Revenue Fund and Airport Renewal Extension Fund budget by adding anticipations to revenue fund for CARES Act grant funds in amount of twenty-seven million eight hundred ninety-five thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars, by adding appropriation to the revenue fund in the amount of twenty-seven million eight hundred ninety-five thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars, by adding appropriation to the renewal and extension fund in the amount of four million nine hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars. The fund's earnings cost associated with maintaining compliance and operations of the airport and for other purposes.
Okay, GM Bedore, speak on this one, please.
Yes, ma'am. This is adding CARES Grant Fund for the FAA established guidelines to supplement our operating and capital expenses in this current fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-two. We will be adding approximately twenty-eight million dollars to our operating costs because of the significant uptick in our operations, and the other five million towards capital cost.
Thank you. I'll move approval. Is there a second?
Aye, second.
Motion by Overstreet, second by aye. Please prepare the vote. Or are we doing voice voting?
Madam Vice Chair, we're doing voice vote.
Okay, Councilmember Westmoreland?
In favor.
Okay, and Farroki?
Yes.
The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable. Takes us to item number six, twenty-one oh zero nine three zero. An ordinance by Councilmember Andre Dickens authorizing the chief financial officer to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-two general fund budget in amount of six million dollars and zero cents by transferring funds from the uncommitted fund balance to support the emergency demolition and reconstruction of Treasure Bridge Road due to the natural gas fire on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation and for other purposes.
Well, we can hear from Commissioner Rowan, but I move approval.
Second, aye.
And we're still doing both voice vote.
Okay, Councilmember Westmoreland, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Okay, and Farroki?
Yes.
The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable.
Okay, let's move to the next item.
Item number seven, twenty-one oh zero nine four two. An ordinance by Councilmember Renellen and Archfond to ratify services rendered in connection with agreement FC one one nine zero four three one, State Route two sixty Glenwood Avenue, US twenty-three, State Route forty-two, Moreland Avenue intersection improvement project, PI zero zero one zero three two three, with Precision two thousand Inc. beginning August twelfth, twenty twenty-one, and to authorize the mayor or his knee to execute an amendment under the agreement on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for a term of three hundred eighteen days retroactively effective from August twelfth, twenty twenty-one, in amount not to exceed two hundred fifty thousand dollars, in accordance with Section two eleven sixty-three, subsection C, Article ten, the Cameron Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, all contract work to be charged to and paid from the fund department organization account and for senior and for other purposes.
Okay, Commissioner Rowan, are you there? Would you like to speak about this?
Oh, I was muted there for a second, Madam Vice Chair. Commissioner Rowan, Atlanta Department of Transportation. This project had had some unforeseen issues on it related to the storm drainage, which we have approved both a, an expansion of scope as well as a time extension on this project. We recommend approval as we push this one towards completion.
Well, thank you. So, I move approval. Is there a second or any councilmembers like to speak about it?
Second, aye.
Okay, a motion by Overstreet, second by aye. Councilmember Westmoreland, how do you vote?
In favor.
Farroki?
Yes.
Thank you.
Vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable. Madam Vice Chair, number eight needs amendment. We need a motion to bring the amendments.
I move to bring the amendment forward. Is there a second?
Second, aye.
Farroki, how do you vote?
Yes.
Westmoreland?
In favor.
Four yeas, zero nays, the amendment is before you. Item number eight, twenty-one oh zero nine four six. An ordinance by Councilmember Amir R. Farroki as amended by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his knee to reduce the posted speed limit on McClendon Avenue Northeast between Moreland Avenue Northeast and Lake Shore Drive Northeast from thirty miles per hour to twenty-five miles per hour and for other purposes.
Is Ms. Alexander here to speak about this?
Madam Vice Chair, I'm going to take this one.
Okay.
Obviously, as part of Vision Zero, we want to, we want to be reducing speeds where we can and where it makes sense. We've looked at this one and we strongly encourage support. We think this will have some incremental safety improvements that are much needed in this corridor.
Okay, I am all for this. So, I move approval. Is there a second?
Second, aye.
Madam Vice Chair, we can do electronic vote.
Absolutely. Okay, please prepare the vote.
Farroki can be the second, and I'll be a yes.
Okay, and...
And I'll be in favor.
The vote is open.
Okay, aye is affirmative, and so is Westmoreland.
Four yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable as amended.
Okay, next item.
Item number nine, twenty-one oh zero nine five eight. An ordinance by Councilmember Carla Smith waiving the competitive camera provisions contained Section two eleven eighty-seven of the Article ten, the Cameron Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to complete services under expired contract FC one one nine zero zero six five, street res servicing and associated maintenance activities Group B with CW Matthews Contracting Company Incorporated over a period of eighteen months to add additional funding sources on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation and for other purposes.
Okay, Commissioner Rowan?
Yes, ma'am. This is related to an issue we had on our resourcing contract on Lennox Road. We refer to it as the pinch. There were some pretty significant safety issues that we chose to address, and as a result, we ran into a situation where we needed to extend the time on the contract. So, this is, this is a time extension has no financial impact.
Okay.
We recommend approval.
Oh, thank you. So, I, I can motion to approve this. Is there a second?
Aye.
Anyone else for a voice vote? I don't remember who's voice voting.
Westmoreland in favor.
Okay, thank you. And Farroki's on the...
Yeah, I voted on the system.
Thank you.
The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable.
Next item.
Item number ten, twenty-one oh zero nine five nine. An ordinance by Councilmember Carla Smith to amend the twenty fifteen municipal facilities bond by transferring one hundred thousand dollars and zero cents from the District One Renewal Atlanta Bond for the purpose of improvements for the grant for conservancy and for other purposes.
Commissioner Rowan?
This is just an administrative ordinance where we're moving horizontal funds to the vertical account and renew, which we, the process for that is through council approval. So, we recommend this one for approval.
All right, and I move approval. Is there a second?
Second, aye.
Councilmember Westmoreland, how do you vote?
In favor.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays, this item is favorable.
Okay, next item.
Item number eleven, Madam Vice Chair, this item needs a motion to bring forth a substitute.
I motion to bring forth the substitute. Is there a second?
Aye.
Westmoreland in favor.
Okay.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays, the substitute is before you. Item number eleven, twenty-one R. Forty-two sixty-three. A resolution by Councilmember Marcy Collier Overstreet and substituted by Transportation Committee recommending that the aviation general manager establish a temporary active provisional permit path program for consistent employees at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport and for other purposes.
Okay, GM Bedore, I want to thank you very much for working with me on this particular item over the last week to get us to this great substitution that should really help our concessionaires at the airport for the temporary access provisional permit. And I, I just really think it's going to make a difference in hiring and getting people at work quicker, and it's something that you all have gone through the trouble of looking at best practices throughout the nation and other airports that are, have implemented this as I've asked you to do, and I just really appreciate you bringing the substitute forward. So, you want to speak on it at all?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. No, it's our pleasure to look at recommendation and explore our avenue, and for us here in aviation, I have to ensure that we're in full compliance...
Uh, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. No, it's our pleasure, um, uh, to look at recommendation and explore our avenue. And, uh, and for us here in aviation, I have to ensure that we're in full compliance with the appropriate, uh, federal regulatory requirement. This substitute have met, uh, we're in full compliance with the Transportation Security Administration regulatory requirement, and it also is in full compliance with the airport security plan. So we are in much in favor, uh, to move this to approval.
Thank you very much. Um, so I move approval. Is there a second?
Second, aye.
Motion by Overstreet, second by aye. Westmoreland, how do you vote?
In favor.
The vote is open. Vote is closed, four yay zero nades, item is favorable on substitute.
Hey, thank you. Next item, please.
Item number twelve, twenty-one R forty-three zero nine, a resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or her designated on behalf of the City of Atlanta to amend the concessions agreement excluding advertising network entertainment, Georgia Lottery Registered Traveler Program, bank and ATM services agreements, and rental car companies to change the street pricing policy from street plus ten percent to street plus fifteen percent, and to authorize requests for unscheduled local seats reporting and for other purposes.
Okay, GM Bedore, can you please speak on this?
Uh, so currently, we have street path pricing plus ten percent above street pricing for upper, uh, sustain the operating cost of personnel and goods, uh, to all business partners, the concessioners. We have done extensive research, and what we are proposing here and need big is this is the right thing to do to ensure the financial solvency of our concession partner by increasing, uh, street pricing from ten percent to fifteen percent because of the escalated cost of personnel payroll and and goods and services. Uh, so we strongly recommend approval.
Absolutely. Um, so move approval. Is there a second?
Second, aye.
Motion by Overstreet, second by aye. Um, Westmoreland, how do you vote?
In favor.
The vote is open. The vote is closed, four yay zero nades, item is favorable.
Thank you. Next item.
Item number thirty, twenty-one R four-three-one-zero, a resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or her designated to execute an agreement for I F B C one-two-two-zero-zero-zero-eight, motor transport maintenance facility rehabilitation with F F S three-sixty I O C on behalf of Department of Aviation at Hartsville-Jackson Atlanta International Airport, in an amount not to exceed eight hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred fifty-one dollars. All services will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department of Transportation numbers listed here in and for other purposes.
GM Bedore?
Yes, ma'am. This, uh, this facility, uh, is in bad need of, uh, uh, an entire, uh, face flip, uh, interior repair, uh, the interior square foot digits are wrong, uh, little over six hundred thou- uh, six thousand square feet and all the the entire exterior of this building, uh, to include floor, ceiling, wall, cabinet, um, doors, bathroom fixtures and et cetera, that needed, uh, uh, entire modernization, uh, or rehabilitation. So we strongly approve, uh, recommend approval to ensure that our motor trans employee have a decent facility, uh, to conduct repairs on our public safety vehicle, that is fire vehicles and police vehicles.
Okay, um, I move approval. Is there a second?
Second, aye.
Motion by Overstreet, second by aye. Westmoreland, how do you vote?
The vote is open. The vote is closed, four yay zero nades, item is favorable.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number fifteen, twenty-one R four-three-one-two, a resolution by Transportation Committee supplementing a tax order fund in the amount not to exceed six million dollars for the use or contract R F P S one-two-one-zero, one-two-zero, one A T L customer experience program with A M V All and Security Services Inc. on behalf of the Department of Aviation at Hartsville-Jackson Atlanta International Airport. All services will be charged to and paid from account numbers listed here in and for other purposes.
Okay, GM Bedore?
Our rent-a-car facility opened twelve years ago have served over three hundred million passengers. Uh, we do a great job in the basic, uh, maintenance, floor cleaning, and the basic preventive maintenance of our system. Uh, we have completed a condition assessment and needed to add additional funds after the existing contract to now do some renewal and replacement of some of our, uh, operating systems, including elevator, escalator, H V A C, uh, system, plumbing, and so on and so forth. So in the next two years, we plan on doing some major retrofit of these systems, and this is adding money to enable us to do that work.
Okay, um, any questions, anyone? I'm okay with it. So I move approval, but I'm open. Is it second?
Second by aye.
Second off, okay.
See, you spoke to-
The vote is open.
Westmoreland, do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you.
Four yay zero nades, item is favorable. Madam Vice Chair, I skipped over item fourteen. Can we take that item, please?
We can.
So, so Madam Chair, that's what I spoke to item fourteen a minute ago about the rent-a-car center.
And guess what? I thought that's what we were doing. I didn't li- look at the actual item number. I was listening to the explanation. So, um, let's do fifteen, because we did fourteen.
But you have to read it.
I have to sign up for caption.
Okay, so read the caption. Let's just do, yeah, let's just do fourteen over.
Item number fourteen, twenty-one R four-three-one-one, a resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or her designated to enter into amendment number two for F C one-one-nine-zero-zero four-eight with Meridian Joint, with Meridian Urban Joint Mission LLC, rental car center and operations and maintenance at Hartsville-Jackson Atlanta International Airport to add funding in the amount not to exceed three million, two hundred thousand dollars. All services will be charged to and paid from the existing account numbers listed here in and for other purposes.
Okay, now, let's speak to this one.
Okay, so that's, uh, that's, uh, what I spoke about in adding additional funding to start, uh, the re- uh, renewal and replacement and rehabilitation of some of our major, uh, components, the rent-a-car center. Um, uh, the rent-a-car center in the last year, we have served over three hundred million passengers, and our system is at a point where we're experiencing significant failures. And so this funding will take us into the next two years to do some of these major retrofits.
All right, so, um, still move approval. Is there a second?
Aye, still second. Yep, aye, still second.
Okay, and, um, Westmoreland, how do you vote?
In favor.
Four yay zero nades, this item is favorable. Madam Vice Chair, can we reconsider item number fifteen, just to catch the accurate vote for this item?
Absolutely. Um, motion to reconsider. Is there a second?
Second, aye.
Please prepare the vote.
One moment.
Westmoreland, how do you, how do you vote?
In favor.
Let me consider. Thank you.
Four yay zero nades, item is favorable. The reconsider has been approved.
Okay, so item fifteen now?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll sound out, I'll sound out caption over again. Uh, twenty-one R four-three-one-two, a resolution by Transportation Committee, meaning a water funding in the amount not to exceed six million dollars for the contract R F P S one-two-one-zero, one-two-zero, one A T L customer experience program with A M A B M All and Security Services Inc. on behalf of the Department of Aviation at Hartsville-Jackson Atlanta International Airport. All services will be charged to and paid from account numbers listed here in and for other purposes.
Okay, um, GM Bedore, do you have anything you'd like to say about this?
We're just adding additional money to help us, uh, with our passenger through through the central passenger terminal complex during constructions of the many projects that we have going on at least for the next five years.
Okay, um, well, I move approval. Is there a second?
Second, aye.
Motion by Overstreet, second by aye. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open.
Councilmember Westmoreland?
In favor.
Four yay zero nades, item is favorable.
Okay, let's move to the item sixteen.
Item number sixteen, twenty-one R four-three-one-three, a resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or her designated to execute an amendment contract number I F B C one-two-zero-zero-three-six-nine landfill and airport slope mowing and clearance with Institute Testing Services Inc. at Hartsville-Jackson Atlanta International Airport to add funding in the amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars. All services will be charged to and paid from account numbers listed here in and for other purposes.
Okay, well, this is pretty straightforward. I'm I'm of approval. Is there a second?
Second, aye.
Please prepare the vote.
Vote is open.
Councilmember Westmoreland, how do you vote?
In favor.
Four yay, vote is closed, four yay zero nades, item is favorable.
All right, next item, please.
Item number seventeen, there's amendment. So we have a motion to amend the paper. The amendment adds the Chattahoochee River Ranch Trail Scoping Study on the Fairway as clause in legislation.
Okay, um, move to amend. Is there a second?
Second, aye.
Motion by Overstreet, second by aye. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open.
Councilmember Westmoreland?
In favor.
Oh, uh, Madam Vice Chair, can I read the amended, uh, caption?
Yes, you can.
Item number seventeen, twenty-one R four-three-fourteen, an amended resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or their or her designated to apply for federal funding from the Atlanta Regional Commission, Georgia Department of Transportation, Federal Transportation Administration, and any partner organization on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation for the purpose of participating in the twenty-twenty-two Transportation Improvement Program called the Projects and for other purposes.
Thank you. Please prepare the vote. It was motion by Overstreet, second by aye.
Aye.
The vote is closed, four yay zero nades, this item is favorable as amended.
Uh, thank you. Let's move on to the next item.
Item number eighteen, twenty-one R four-three-one-five, a resolution by Transportation Committee, correct resolution twenty-one R thirty-two seventy-two adopted by Atlanta City Council on April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, and approved by operation of law on April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one by deleting the incorrect funding source one-zero-zero-one general fund and replacing it with the correct funding source thirty-five zero-three capital finance fund and for other purposes.
Okay, Ms. Alexander, would you like to speak on that?
Madam Vice Chair, I'll I'll take all of DOTs today. This is with the the creation of the the Transportation Infrastructure Fund. This just, we're we're just adding funding accounts. There's there's no significant change to the contracts. We we recommend approval.
Okay, uh, move approval. Can I get a second, please?
Second, aye.
Motion by Overstreet, second by aye. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open.
And Madam Vice Chair, did we get item seventeen?
We did. Um, we-
Okay.
We did. We we amended it and voted favorably.
Okay, I I had a little technical hiccup there, so I was late getting back in.
Okay, did you wanna say anything about it?
No, no. I I strongly encourage approval, and you did it, so that's great.
Okay, good. Um, I thought it was something we needed also. Let's, um, so where are we now? On number? Okay.
Vote is, vote is on item number eighteen.
So we're moving to nineteen.
We're waiting on, uh, Councilor, that Westmoreland.
And I will vote in favor to end the wait.
Waiting on me to ask, Councilmember Westmoreland. Thank you.
The vote is closed, four yay zero nades, this item is favorable.
All right, thank you. Let's move to the, I think we're at dual referred. Is that correct?
Girl, item number nineteen. Item number nineteen, twenty-one R four-three-one-six, a resolution by Transportation Committee on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation, the correct resolution twenty-one R thirty-eight-fifty-five adopted by the Atlanta City Council on September seventh, twenty-twenty-one, and approved by the operation of law on September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, for the purpose of correct omitted information not included in resolution twenty-one R thirty-eight fifty-five and for the purposes.
Thank you. Commissioner Rowan, would you like to speak on this one?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair. It it's the same same situation as item eighteen. We're we're adding a funding line, just a different different project. So we we recommend approval.
Okay, sounds good. Um, and I, um, move to approve. Is there a second?
Second, aye.
Westmoreland.
Okay, uh, motion by Overstreet, second aye. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open.
Westmoreland in favor.
Thank you, Westmoreland.
The vote is closed, four yay zero nades, item is favorable. That takes us to item hell, item number thirty-one. There's amendment, the amendment attaches, uh, sorry, let me y'all read the immediate caption to item number thirty-one.
But this is, so we are removing item from hell, and it's item thirty-one, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. And we're going to them.
Amend. The amendment attaches, uh, Exhibit A, which is the transportation, uh, the the T-Splod project list, as Exhibit A.
Okay, and everyone should have received that. Already. So I move to, uh, amend, please.
Madam, uh, Vice Chair, let me y'all read the amendment caption.
Caption for sure. What yet?
Item thirty-one, twenty-one R thirty-nine twenty-seven, a resolution by Councilor Carla Smith as amended by Transportation Committee, calling for the imposition by the Fulton County Commission of the Transportation Special Purpose Local Option Sales, T-SAT, T-Splod, to fund transportation purposes in a referendum election thereon, to approve the submission of a list of transportation projects and purposes, the Fulton County, to specify the aggregate maximum cost of such purposes to be funded by the T-Splods, to specify the maximum period of time the T-Splods will be imposing for other purposes.
Okay, so I'm I'm moved to amend the paper. Um, and I do have a-
Second, aye.
Thank you. Aye. Um, so motion by Overstreet, second by aye. I do have a a couple of questions that I think a couple of people do, but- that I think a couple of people do, but, um, please prepare the vote.
The vote is open.
Because it's, okay. Westmoreland, how do you vote?
In favor.
Can someone re-interpret the amendment or describe it again, please?
Sure. Mr. Johnson, uh, Councilmember Faroki would like for you to resound the amendment, the caption.
Yes, uh, the amendment, resound the caption or specify the nature of the amendment?
The nature of the amendment, if possible.
Exhibit A is the T-Splas project list.
Okay, I have the different pieces on my screen. Thank you. That's that's all I need. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And it was, uh, sent out to us. Did did you get a chance to look at that?
I did. Thank you.
Okay.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four eight zero nades, the item has been amended. Now, what do you, uh, uh, motion?
Uh, I move approval. Is there a second?
Second, aye.
Please prepare the vote.
Are we going to hear presentation?
I am. So I'm I'm gonna be positive. Um, like, I I'm I'm in support of the actual motion. I am absolutely open if if someone would like to, uh, if you have a question, if you'd like to hear anything else from Commissioner Rowan. Um, so that's that's what I'm stating beforehand. It's, um, you know, it's up to the will of the body, you councilmembers.
Okay, this is Councilmember Westmoreland. Commissioner Rowan, I don't know if there's a slide deck or not, but if you could, um, at least take some time to kind of walk the public through the conversations that have happened in community sessions over the last few months, um, and how the list came to be in its present form and any other thoughts that you have. And then I have a couple of questions for the public's benefit as well.
Yeah, yes, sir. I'd I'd be happy to can can walk you through that pretty quickly. So really, over the the past couple of years with the formation of DOT, we've been working closely with councilmembers to to identify the transportation priorities, transportation needs. At the same time, our planning and strategy team has has developed what I I think history will show to be a best-in-class prioritization model wherein we look at safety, equity, and mobility, and we actually assign a score to projects. Then we overlay that with a condition assessment. And we actually, when it comes to sidewalks, for an example, have have really every corridor in the city ranked. And so this is a this is a data-driven approach that that is pushing the 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 most significant needs to the the front of the line. When you see the project breakdown, it's it's vast majority of this is sidewalks and safety projects. One thing I would note is that we based the revenue projection off the current T-Splas, so it's probably a shade on the conservative side. Having lived through part of the rebaselining, we don't want to to be in that position again. Um, so we 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 aired on the conservative side, which would mean there there's the potential for some some over-collection on this one, maybe to the tune of about five to eight percent. Um, and so we we feel like from a financial position, we've we've taken a a fiscally prudent position. The projects are are very much, um, needed. We we think we're making a major lift. It's it's significant sidewalks, safety improvements within corridors, um, looking at things like there are areas where some of our highest ridership transit routes don't have shelters. And one of the reasons is because MARTA can't go acquire the right-of-way. So we want to be a good partner and work with them to actually be putting shelters up in areas where they're most needed. So, um, we're we're, we we think we have a solid transportation list. We had four, kind of four quadrants, um, that we approached for outreach. Each one had a noon session and a six P. M. session, and we had a just a basic presentation talking about the the major buckets that the money is going into. Um, this this is really the first time this this project list has seen the light of day because, you know, it's a it's a moving target up until this point. And so, um, we would we would strongly, strongly encourage the the committee to approve this this effort. At the end of the day, it's the will of the people. They they can vote it up or they can vote it down. But it was a year ago that we were having a project finance work session at the at the request of Chairman Dickens, and it became very clear in doing the math that over about a twenty-five-year period, we can we can make significant progress in in elevating the the safety and the state of good repair of our infrastructure assets. And the T-Splas is a is a critical element of this. And so this is this is the the two, we call it two-point-oh. It's it's a a very deliberate focus on safety, equity, and mobility. And then we, again, recommend approval.
Councilmember Westmoreland?
Overstreet? Yeah, a couple more, if you don't mind. Um, can you talk for the benefit of the public, um, you mentioned that the vast majority of this is going towards, um, sidewalks, either new sidewalks or, um, repair of old, um, as well as kind of the continuation of the safer slash complete streets work that we've been doing. Um, some of the feedback that we've received, um, over the last five or six years from Renew one-point-oh and T-Splas one-point-oh, um, has been around budgeting. Um, and frankly, the rebaselining process that we went through three years ago was pretty painful. Um, can you talk a little bit more about the way we're approaching the next phase of this work in terms of the promises we're making to communities and how we feel safe we're going to be able to keep them, um, with the dollars that we're allocating this time?
So the the the, I'll I'll answer that question, sir, in 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 two lanes. The first is on the revenue side. Um, the advantage that we have in in a two-point-oh program is we have the data from the one-point-oh program. So so roughly speaking, we're collecting about six million a month on the T-Splas program. We we had the dip through the T-Splas, but if you look at our initial projection for the rebaselining, it was it was roughly two-fifty, two-fifty-five. We believe it's going to come in at two-ninety. And so if a T-Splas one-point-oh is is, let's just say, two-ninety, we base T-Splas two-point-oh on a revenue collection of three hundred. And so that was that was a number that we felt comfortable with. Obviously, there's there's uncertainty over a five-year period. We're we're confident that the city is going to continue to grow. Um, I I think maybe the the pandemic put a little bit of, um, you know, respect for the unknown in our minds. And so from a revenue perspective, we feel that the three hundred is a is a solid number because we're we're about to generate two-ninety on this program. So there there aren't any wild deviations there. The same thing holds true on the the cost side. So, um, we have the data from the first program. So we've been able to use the the current program's cost data to get get better cost estimates. I would I would share at this stage of the game, these these conceptual estimates, generally speaking, they're they're plus or minus fifteen percent. Um, obviously, we we have some work to do to look at right-of-way and utilities and get these things designed. But we 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 base them on on today's prices. We put some contingency in there to have have some room to operate. And so whereas the first program was, I I felt maybe had had stretched a little bit, this one, we're we're going to be a little more conservative going into it. And then the 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 surplus side of things would be under council's control. And so my my preference is always to to manage to a a an accurate budget, and as change happens, seek seek approval and and explanation for those changes. And so that that's the approach that we've taken. We we feel that we have have very good numbers based on on the data in this current program and and what we see going forward. And so, um, hap- happy to get deeper into those numbers for anyone who who wants to see those. But at the at the high level, um, a little little bit on the under-promise-over-deliver side, if if I may say so.
Sure. What, um, happens, we're talking about a three-hundred-million-dollar program, um, and I share your confidence that we'll reach that amount of money. What happens if we get three-hundred-and-forty-million dollars?
So so my understanding, sir, is that if if we if we get three-forty, that 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 forty million would would roll into a general fund account that would then, basically, we would have to come back to city council to determine how to use that for for transportation purposes. So let's say, for example, the program cost was three-twenty instead of three hundred. We would be coming back to you saying, we we need twenty million of that, and here's why. If the program came in at three hundred, and there was the the forty sitting there, we would have to come back to you and say, here's how we recommend spending that money. And so it's putting putting control in in council's hands for for that surplus.
Is a couple of related questions. One, is there language that explicitly states that in this legislation? I understand that that's how it will work. Um, and I'm trying to think about ways to provide the public with additional levels of confidence, um, that some of the things we saw in the past, bond premium, for instance, um, in the past, when when there was additional revenue, that people actually did come to council twice, once for the first phase of that bridge, and then again for the second phase. Um, and so they, in practice and legally, the vote has to be taken by council. Do anyone here know if that's explicitly spelled out in this piece of legislation? And if it's not, is there a way for us to add it since it's already happening? Um, put it a little bit more exclusively so that the public can see it clearly spell that?
And, sir, Mr. Westmoreland, Councilmember Westmoreland, I I believe that is the intent in the the legislation and setting the max revenue to equal the projected revenue. That that that's why there's no no cushion there. You know, even on the first program, where we were projecting two-fifty, the max was three-eighty. So there's there's a little room, still a little room to play in there. On this two-point-oh, the the max is set right at the the projected amount. So then anything over that max, we're coming back to you.
And and if revenue is higher than expected, like, once we hit the three-hundred-million, we don't stop collecting the four-tenths of a penny, right? It'll collect for a sixty-month window.
Okay, correct. We 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 need to collect what we collect in that sixty-month window.
Right. And then can you talk a little bit, we received some some feedback from the public around the point four versus point five. Um, can you talk about what internal conversations took place that led to the recommendation to stick with point four?
Yeah, you know, I I think that that there was some some comfort in the point four because that was the the, um, matched the existing program. So there there's something to be said for this is really just an extension, not an increase. Um, but, you know, the the additional point-one increment would would add another seventy-five billion over the five years. And so we we stuck with the point four because that matched this current program. You'll you'll see a lot of the 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 logic was really based on things that were that worked in the one-point-oh program.
Okay, that's all helpful to me. Um, and I think that is, um, the extent of my questions right now, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, and I do see, um, Councilmember Faroki's hand raised. Um, and I would say, you know, I I was actually, you know, happy to just, um, do the vote first and ask the couple of questions afterwards. But you asked both of my questions, uh, Councilmember Westmoreland. Wanted to know how we got to the, um, the four-ten, I mean, yeah, the point four, um, and what we would do with excess, uh, because those are the questions that, um, were asked of me. But I actually got those answers beforehand. Um, and I do think it is important that we, uh, don't position this as, uh, an increase. And so I understand that well. Um, I, um, I may have one more question, but let's go to Councilmember Faroki.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Overstreet, uh, Commissioner Rowan, I I appreciate your answers to Councilmember Westmoreland's questions. Uh, they, he captured a few of what I wanted to ask. But one one I think that would be helpful, and this is mostly a softball, but it's it's meant more for the public than I think for council, because we understand very much the limitations that the general fund presents with respect to updating infrastructure. Can you talk a little bit about why, um, a regular T-Splas or a T-Splas on the heels of one we're just wrapping up is needed? And, um, if you can, in answering that question, just talk a little bit about the infrastructure, uh, backlog we have and and the costs that we're we're trying to catch up with.
Sure, I'd I'd be happy to, sir. And then I'll I'll start with the, um, the 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 need. You know, it was it was a year ago we we presented. And just using round numbers, you can look at sidewalks, both new construction and repair. That's, we estimate that between eight-hundred million to a billion. So let's call that a billion because it makes the math easier in my head. The resurfacing, another another billion-dollar program, and this is over estimated twenty-five years. And then what, the the bridges, we we don't talk a lot about those, but that's probably about another half a billion, so two-point-five in all. Um, and so you start looking at that compared to the general fund. Um, the Atlanta Department of Transportation is about a fifty-million-dollar department. By the time you strip away labor and fringe and and what we pay for streetlights, in a given year, roughly speaking, that's about fifteen million that's going to capital projects. So if you take two-point-five billion divided by fifteen million, we'll never get there. And and I think you very, very wisely and accurately pointed out a year ago, Councilmember, that the much of our math is based on a static number. It wasn't calculating the the continuous decay of the infrastructure asset. So you could probably say it's closer to three, three and a half. When you start looking at at a T-Splas, for example, that's that's roughly speaking, sixty million a year, the collection last month, if that held, it could be seventy million a year. And so you start looking at seventy million a year over the course of of twenty, twenty-five years, that that's moving the needle. The the other thing is that that these programs enable us to have the the resources on hand to use as local match with other funding sources. That that's something we're we're getting more serious about is projects like bridges. Bridges are perfect for federalizing. And so we want to federalize as many of these bridge projects as we can. And when you start looking at the breakdown of the math, the the general fund is is important. It's a small piece. The T-Splas is the next available tool that we have at our disposal. Um, and then, you know, we had talked about some of the other things on on the innovative finance side, but but really, the the mathematical picture doesn't complete itself without something at the level of a T-Splas. And so, um, really, if if you broke it down at the district level, and these are just just kind of ballpark numbers, you know, a a given year out of the general fund is one to one-point-two-five per district. Um, you start looking at at T-Splas at sixty million a year, well, that's five million going into a district. So you're seeing anywhere from a four to five X multiplier. And that's what we're talking about, is that multiplier effect. So, um, I I hope that answered the question. You know, when I get started on numbers, I can go all day.
No, I I appreciate it. It does. You know, I think that the the point that I hear you making is, you know, we have a, uh, one, infrastructure maintenance backlog challenge, but two, that that backlog isn't static. It grows. And if we're not finding additional funds, T-Splas, federal, state, uh, whatever the the cocktail mix is, um, we will, uh, have potholes until our great-grandchildren are here. And so I I, um, I appreciate that. I I do think it's worth noting, for folks who are listening, you know, one of the challenges that Atlanta faces, uh, that our pure metro communities do to some extent, but not to the greatest extent we do, which is, you know, we, as Atlanta residents, pay a disproportionate amount for maintenance of roads, bridges, to some extent sidewalks, because folks use them every day who don't live in the city, um, as they come in and out, whether it's to work or to play, whatever it may be. And so, um, we're always kind of playing catch-up because our stuff wears out quick because so many folks are using it. Uh, and, uh, so I I appreciate that. Um, Com- Commissioner Rowan, my other question is, correct me if I'm wrong, but you've been involved with other T-Splas, Cobb County, for example, in your in your In your, in your, uh, methodology for, uh, costing projects that are on the list, um, did it model what you did in, in Cobb or any other T-SLOSSes you've been around? Um, if so, why, if not why?
Yeah, so, so the, the interesting thing, Councilmember, is that, you know, you, you, you have limited sources of cost data. A lot of, a lot of jurisdictions, including our own, will look to G dot pricing. One of the things we've looked at is that we, you know, we don't have the volume that they do, so we call it G dot plus. There's a certain percentage over their average price that we pay. That can range from ten to fifteen percent. But the biggest thing for us is we, we have enough projects in construction on the, the current program, but that gives us pretty good cost data. And so we can use that data as the baseline, we hedge a little bit against, against cost increases. And, and so we, we're not starting from scratch on our, our cost estimates. I know in my days at Cobb, they, they kept their own pay item mean summary, and, and so, you know, Cobb had a list of unit prices, G dot had a list of unit prices, and they were always comparing theirs against G dot to see how they could be more competitive. But at the end of the day, they were using their own performance history to make decisions on future performance. And, and I think at the end of the day, that's, that's really about as accurate as you can get.
Terrific. Thank you, Commissioner. Those are all the questions I have. Chairwoman Overstreet.
Thank you. Um, and let me tell you, I think you guys really just summed it up. Uh, the backlog is enormous, and I cannot imagine not having the T-SLOSS available to us. I, the main thing that I wanted to convey, uh, once we concluded this vote, uh, was, you know, to the public, was to, to assure everyone that this vote does not mean that the T-SLOSS is a go. This just means that we're going to come to the public to ask for, um, you know, via ballot, on, on the next, um, election ballot, I believe it will be in May, um, to ask for the T-SLOSS to be approved. And, um, I think that we have so much more work to do, and it is always nice to know that we have projects teed up and funded. Um, so I am in strong support of T-SLOSS two point oh, and, um, I will be, you know, looking forward to the public engagement about the education of it through, um, twenty twenty-two so that we can get a favorable vote, uh, from the entire city and, um, in both counties. So that is where I am with it. So I think that, um, so thank you, Commissioner Rowan. I think we're at the point where I've already made the motion, and we have a second. Is that correct, or should we redo that?
Correct. We have a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Madam, Madam Chair.
Yes.
One last thing, um, from Councilmember Westmoreland. I, I think I might be asking you and Ms. Hyde to withdraw your motions for a second. So I'd like to offer, and then, um, Commissioner Rowan, I want to make sure that you're okay with this, but it sounds like you are, um, to add a final be it further resolved clause, um, that states that, you know, be it further, be it further resolved, that any changes to this project list, um, and any additional revenue received, um, will come to council for authorization and, and allocation or something to that effect. It's already gonna happen, but I think it would benefit the public just to see that in writing.
So I'm in favor of that. Uh, can you send that to us, uh, in, um, via email? I think that's the way it would have to be in order for it to be a proper amendment. Is that correct, uh, Mr. Johnson?
Uh, correct, Madam Vice Chair.
Yeah, and I'm fine to withdraw my second on the pending motion. Okay. And, yeah, we can redo that part. I would, thank you. I withdraw my motion. Um, and I would, um, second your amendment, um, Councilmember Westmoreland.
Okay. I'll be able to resolve it any.
Uh, I see that Councilmember Faroki has raised his hand. Um, are you, you sending?
That's, that's, that's leftover. I just took it off. Apologies. Yeah.
Sure, thanks. Uh, Councilmember Westmoreland, you sending that over to us now?
Yes, now. I'm gonna reply all to this email right now.
Okay. So I second your amendment.
Not the most beautiful of language, but it gets the job done, and it is in your inbox.
Okay, so, um, please prepare the vote for the amendment.
One moment, the vote is open.
Councilmember Aye, how do you vote?
Yeah. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. This item is amended.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we have one more item, right, that we're moving forward?
Madam Chair, we need a motion to, uh, approve as amended.
Uh, uh, move approval, please. Um, you know, I'm gonna make, I'm sorry, I have one more amendment I want to make. Okay, let me hear that. Um, on the list, there's an item that's listed, we, there's a, my item says, "Bridge Maintenance Repair and Replacement Citywide." And then there's one that pulls out a particular bridge in my district, is making an emergency repair, and has it labeled as it's fixed. That's really a citywide project. It, it's the bridge that burned up due, due to a gas line break, and it's, it's something I've gone back and forth on, and I'd like the list to reflect if the other bridges are considered citywide, that, that says citywide instead of fixed. Oh, I, I think that's fair. Okay. That's my motion. So, so are you sending that to us, um, via email? Um, I can, yep, I can do that.
Councilmember Aye, what page do you get on?
It is on the, um, it's page five. I mean, it's after page four, it's on the list in that, um, the first page of the T-SLOSS project list.
Hey, I can correct it.
Thank you so much. Uh, Commissioner Rowan, is, uh, any of that a problem for you? And if so, I just need to understand why.
Madam Vice Chair, I, I understand the logic. It's, uh, it was an unfortunate situation where a, a bridge was totally destroyed, and one way or the other, we have to fix it. And so I, I support the fix, and, you know, what, how we categorize it, um, I'll, I'll leave that up to, to you all, but at the end of the day, we're gonna get that, that bridge fixed.
Okay. So, um, I second your, did you make a motion to amend also? Yeah, I, yeah. Okay, I second, I second your, uh, motion. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open.
Councilmember Westmoreland, how do you vote?
In favor. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. This item has been amended.
Sounds good. Uh, so now I move approval to item thirty-one as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Move, motion by Overstreet, second by Westmoreland, please prepare the vote.
The vote is open.
Aye to the yes.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable as amended. That takes us to item number thirty-four on Hill. Madam Vice Chair?
Yes.
Item number thirty-four, twenty-one O, zero eight seven seven. Awarded is by Councilmember J.P. Massakite, authorizing the mayor or her guest need to make the intersection of Old Field Road Northwest and P.C. Battle Avenue Northwest an always stop control intersection to authorize the Atlanta Department of Transportation to install stop signs at that intersection and for other purposes.
Okay, um, move approval. Is there a second? Second, aye.
Second.
Please prepare the vote. Councilmember Westmoreland, how do you vote?
I am finally on the computer, but I vote in favor.
Oh, okay.
Vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. That takes us to item number thirty-five. Uh, here's a motion to bring forth a substitute. Can I get a motion to bring forth a substitute?
Move to bring forth the substitute. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Overstreet, second by Westmoreland. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open.
Aye to the yes.
Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. The substitute is before you. Item number thirty-five, twenty-one R, forty-one fifty-nine. A resolution by Councilmember Andre Dickens as substituted by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or her guest need to amend the corporation agreement of each community improvement district to outline qualifications and performance criteria for community improvement districts that independently procure and manage professional construction services necessary to advance and implement transportation infrastructure projects in the city of Atlanta to implement portions of the One Atlanta Strategic Plan and for other purposes.
Okay, um, Councilmembers, you have anything to speak to this about? Um, if not, I move approval.
Second, Faroki.
Motion by Overstreet, second by Faroki, um, and we, we do. Uh, Councilmember Westmoreland, what would you like to, is, would you like to speak, or did you press it by accident?
No, I pressed it on purpose. I just want to say thank you to Councilman Faroki and to the CIDs. This is a excellent piece of legislation and a step in the right direction. So thank you to all of the parties who helped to get us here.
Yes, this is why I want a CID really, really badly in my district. So, um, fantastic. Please prepare the vote.
One moment. The vote is open.
Aye to the yes.
The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable and substitute. This takes us to our last item. Item number thirty-six, twenty-one R, four-two, four-four. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or her guest need to execute an agreement for RFP S one-two-one-zero-three-two-three with Jacobs Engineering Group, Incorporated for Asset Management Consulting and Professional Services at Hartfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport. In amount not to exceed two million, three hundred seventy thousand dollars and zero cents, all services will be charged to and paid from the account number listed here and for other purposes. Madam Vice Chair, there's an amendment. The amendment touches the I for reported legislation.
Okay, that's wonderful. Let's bring the amendment forward. I motion to bring the amendment forward. Is there a second? To bring the amendment forward. Second, aye. Okay, motion by Overstreet, second by Aye. Um, please prepare the vote.
One moment, the vote is open.
Councilmember Westmoreland, how do you vote?
In favor.
The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. This item has been amended.
Okay, so the amendment is before us. Uh, would you like to read it in?
I already did, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair.
Sorry, I need to, I, I would, I'd need to know if, uh, GM Bedore would like to speak on this amendment.
Again, good morning, Madam Vice Chair, BB Bedore, I'm Aviation General Manager. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, very good. Um, so what we are doing here in the Department of Aviation is setting up four phases of our modernization program at, for our airport. I already have three phases strongly in place, but the first phase of that four-phase approach is not in place. This is a, a professional service contract would provide us that service, the first phase, and that is to help us with our condition assessment, and from the condition assessment of our facility and infrastructure, we'll use that and move it into the next phase of planning, and the third phase design, and the last phase is construction to keep peace with modernizing our facility into the next twenty-plus years.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, so I move approval. Is there a second? Second, aye. Motion by Overstreet, second by Aye. Please prepare the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable as amended. Madam Vice Chair, that concludes our legislative items for today.
All right, uh, Mr. Councilmember Westmoreland would like to speak. Ask, uh, GM Bedore a question, please.
Yeah, just a quick question, Mr. General Manager. Um, in light of the, um, incident that happened, uh, Saturday before last, I wonder if you could just, um, recap briefly, um, how that process went from our perspective in terms of the procedures that we have in place for such an incident, and if, based on that experience, we envision any changes to anything moving forward?
So certainly, uh, Mr. Councilmember Westmoreland, so approximately at one-thirty PM on Saturday, November the twentieth, uh, during secondary screening by the TSA of a passenger carry-on luggage for a prohibited item, the said passenger lunged into his luggage and retrieved a, a weapon that was in this luggage that did not show up on the TSA x-ray but came up as a prohibited item. And his attempt to retrieve that weapon, uh, 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 rung was discharged, and the passenger took off fleeing. Um, and during that accidental discharge, uh, this shot of, uh, this discharge, it created panic, uh, within this main security checkpoint that had approximately several hundred passengers. The law enforcement, uh, uh, person that was on the podium behind the checkpoint immediately took action and radioed that call into our command center. And, uh, the command center immediately dispatched the appropriate law enforcement personnel to the scene, to the firefight. Um, and the ensuing panic, um, of the passenger, they scattered in several different directions, exiting the airport on both the north and south side, and some also exited the airport on the west side of the airport. Our response team immediately put into action our playbook, our, we do have a, a playbook for this type of active shooter situation. Uh, once we have con, we receive confirmation of the incident that it was an accidental discharge and not an active shooter or an explosion, as was reported on social media. And once, uh, our law enforcement team rendered, uh, the area safe, we immediately went into our recovery operations. Um, we completed our recovery operations and restored the airport to full operations in approximately two hours. I did receive, uh, uh, phone calls from my peers in the industry, namely Fort Lauderdale, uh, Los Angeles, and San, um, um, San Antonio, who ha, all have experienced active shooter situations, and they were very commendable, uh, on our approach in respond, mitigate, and restoring our operations in such a small window of opportunity, uh, without any injuries, uh, to our customers. Um, following that incident, we conducted, uh, immediately conducted a hot wash, uh, did some internal review of our process and our procedures, and... of our process and our procedures, and over the last 10 days, we have gone through, and we're doing a forensic analysis of every single element of our response and our response plan. We are scheduled, well, I am scheduled to meet with TSA Washington leadership this afternoon here at the airport to review the incident with them. As we are conducting this forensic analysis, we should be able to finish our analysis by Monday. In the meantime, the individual turned himself in yesterday, the Clayton Conkey. We did locate the weapon, where he abandoned the weapon. We are looking at CCTV footage to see what we could learn from those footage and apply it to our existing plan to strengthen our existing plan. And the fortunate thing that we were able to be so efficient in restoring this airport operation in just under two hours to full operations was because a few days earlier, we did conduct a semi-functional exercise on this particular scenario of an active shooter. So the team that responded had just gone through the exercise, their skill was honed, and they were able to perform with a sense of urgency and excellence. And so there's always lessons to learn, and there's always areas where we could strengthen, and one of those areas is the panic and self-evacuation of our customer. We're looking at that very closely and see where we could improve to bring a sense of calmness to our customer in an incident like this going forward.
Councilmember Westmoreland?
That was super helpful. Thank you, sir.
I was thinking the same thing. Excellent. Thank you very much for taking the time to explain all of those details to us. Councilmembers, does anyone else have any questions or anything else that you'd like to share with the public at all? This is our last transportation meeting.
From the Department of Aviation side, Madam Vice Chair, we want to say congratulations to our new mayor-elect, and we want to say congratulations to all our councilmembers who were elected yesterday, that will be taken office come January. So Aviation Department look forward to continue the strong working relationship with our legislative body.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I, you know, same comments here, looking forward to 2022. We will be all fresh and brand new, and just looking forward to that. Thank you very much for all of the work that you've done at the airport and your entire team for staying so flexible, engaging, and professional and top-notch for the entire four years that I've been on council, so as the vice chair. So thank you very much, and I will see you all at the top of the year. But for the councilmembers, I will start off with announcements by saying that I am now headed to the funeral of Michael Langford. And so I'd like for everyone just to have a moment of silence, you know, in prayer for his family and our city, because we lost a servant's servant. He helped me understand what it took to fill this role and to actually run a campaign of any kind and what service means. And so I'll just take a quick moment of silence for Michael Langford and his entire family. Anyone else have anything they'd like to say? If not, we can adjourn. So that's nothing. Thank you, councilmembers. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Good job.